And welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of eighteen July, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Mayor Miller. I'd like to excuse Jeremy Carter, of course, he's been giving service to our country right about now, so if you would.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Young and second by Ms. Hubig to excuse Mr. Carter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are, the council is now going to enter in a, into a closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one four zero four B regarding collective bargaining topics. This closed session is expected to last thirty minutes and no action will be taken. Upon completion of the closed session, council will return to the open meeting and resume our agenda. So we'll be back in a minute.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We'll now return to our regular open meetings. So would you please join me in the pledge allegiance? Okay, and Ms. Hubick, please.
I would like to move that we amend the agenda to add item 7C, which is Resolution 3093, a resolution authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Anacortes and the Commissioned Anacortes Police Services Guild.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to amend the agenda adding item 7C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7C is now added to the agenda. Thank you. Onto announcements and committee reports. Couple of announcements here from the National 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, launched Saturday, July 16th. So calling this number will route people via the call, text, or chat to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This service is free to the users. It's funded by phone service fees like your 911 fee, and it's a confidential service available to anyone experiencing mental health-related distress. Loved ones may also call or text 988 if they are worried about someone who may need support. Also, Skagit County announced a modified burn ban for all residential and land clearing fires. This is, of course, outside the city limits because they're already banned inside the city limits. And Skagit County will not issue permits for existing permits and are suspended until further notice based on forecast weather conditions. Quick COVID update, seven-day case rate has gone down in Skagit County. Hospitalization is the same in Skagit County. Island Health is holding three, has three COVID cases. So that's it for me, and we've got Finance Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday included Ms. McDougal and myself. We talked about a couple of things that we'll brief the council on now. First of all, OpenGov, that's the new software that we're getting to facilitate the budget process more clearly describe what we're spending money on to the public, to council members. There have been some implementation issues. We talked about potentially ways to use project codes instead of cost codes that are tacked onto invoices for project tracking. Try to adapt our process to the software rather than trying to get the software to adapt to us. We'll be talking more about that in the context of Capital Facilities Plan as well. Mr. Hogland brought to us the idea of potentially capping our annual adjustment on utility rates. We currently adjust most of the fees that are on the unified fee schedule by the Consumer Price Index, and CPI is high, 10% maybe. So we suggested that maybe as an alternative to arbitrarily capping the adjustment, that we look at using the core inflation figure instead of the headline inflation figure. June core inflation, for example, is 5%, while the headline number is 9%. So that doesn't include gas, doesn't include food, might be a more accurate picture of what the city is spending its money on. Because our expenses don't go away just because we cap utility rates. We don't want to get further behind, generally. Maybe more discussion there in the future because it is currently set to inflate. And I think it is October, based on our existing fee schedule. The Finance Department is looking at a service for utility billing, basically outsourcing all the check opening that the Finance Department does. That would cost some money, but it would save a bunch of staff time. That staff time wouldn't necessarily be realized savings. So there's definitely a question mark as to whether that's a good idea. I think our position as the committee is, probably makes sense. There's always other things for staff to do. But as an alternative, we suggested, what if we offered a more substantial discount than we currently do on your utility bills to sign up with auto withdrawal? Because if you sign up today, you get a $2 per month discount. Not everybody enrolled in that. It has to be auto withdrawal, not auto payment. So if you're paying by credit card, you're not eligible for the discount because we still incur those staff time costs for processing that. So we suggested, what if, as an alternative, we offered a more substantial discount? Maybe $10, maybe $50, on a time-limited basis to sign up for auto pay, to eliminate that need to do all the manual opening of envelopes and processing of checks. Obviously, more calculations need to be done to figure out what the benefit to the city is and what the right number is and how to promote it and how to actually get people to enroll in it. But we made that suggestion. Waste Management wants us to charge, wants to charge us for any resident that has yard waste containers that are open an extra one to three inches. And they want to charge an extra yard waste fee for that, which uniformly everybody thinks is outrageous. We said, in the alternative, we'd rather approve the recycle contamination charge, which actually is related to a real problem. And I understand that the city has already sent a letter to Waste Management saying, "We're not doing that because that's not authorized by the contract." But it is an issue that we're continuing to face. And then on the Capital Facilities Plan, we looked at some of the data that we are getting from departments now, based on the forms that Finance puts out to departments to collect information on capital facilities projects. And we talked about how we do need those project worksheets to say whether the project is impact fee eligible, whether the project is necessary to support new development, whether the project is necessary to maintain existing infrastructure and facilities, so that we can make better decisions, we as council can make better decisions when the plan comes to us. We need better descriptions from departments. It's not enough to say, "New park," not to pick on the Parks Department. It's not enough to say, "New park." It needs to say what that park would include. If we have an estimate for $400,000, we ought to be able to justify that amount. And then also to distinguish between the types of impact fees so that we can do that calculation and so that the Capital Facilities Plan can be the single version of the truth for what it is we're planning to do with capital facilities and so that we can make choices as policymakers as to what we want to move forward and what we want to hang back on and in order to prioritize the things that are important to us. And that's it.
All right, thank you. A lot of good stuff there. And I will highlight the unified fee schedule and our utility rates because I think it's really important that we take a look at that because we thought it was a good idea, and it is a good idea to tie it to CPI inflators or inflators to make sure that we're covering our costs. But I don't think we expected such a dramatic increase. So I appreciate Finance Committee looking at that one. Moving on to Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting. It was Councilmember Walters, Mr. Young, and myself and an all-star Public Works staff today. We had a full house, and we all were delighted to welcome our new Public Works Director, Mr. Henry Hash. Today is his first day, and we are all delighted to have him here. We moved on from that to conversations about some things on our agenda tonight. We have the Stormwater Ordinance that's here, and that's in Other Business. And we've talked about that quite a bit, both at the committee level and at council. So the committee had no further questions for Ms. Henneberg, our Stormwater Manager. We talked next about our antenna. Oh, I'm going out of order, but that's okay. But the antenna project scope is also on the consent agenda tonight. And if you'll recall, that's our automated reading system. We have a new antenna on City Hall, and there will be four more installed around Fidalgo Island so that they can be read not by people driving around in vehicles but from technology that enables them to do it from City Hall. So that's pretty nifty. And we also talked about the contract modification for the wastewater treatment plant outfall project. And this is with Dalton Olmstead and Flugelvand. And this is an expected addition to the scope of that work. And that is, that will be discussed tonight, too, by staffs. And the last thing we talked about is, Councilmember Walters brought forth a memo that we're taking a look at, and it's about standardization of our curb gutter and sidewalks regulations. Because as we know, different neighborhoods have a lot of different inconsistencies, and how do we want to address those? So we talked about what that would look like, also the long-term maintenance costs of what our choices would be, and how does development pay for new development of those amenities? So what are our standards? What are the different neighborhood wants and characteristics? And so we would analyze that block by block and use a public process, too. We would definitely want to involve people from the neighborhoods to know what they would like and what's feasible from a cost point of view, too, because we can build them, but then we need to maintain them. So how do we best do that? So more to follow. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements, committee reports? Okay, we're moving on to Item 5, which is Public Comment. Opportunity to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda. Anybody here in City Hall? And I have no attendees online. So we're moving on to our Consent Agenda Items 6, A, B, C, and D. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'd like to pull 6D.
6D, got it.
Mayor Miller. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. McDougal. Oh, wait, we're waiting for a second. Sorry about that.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubick, thank you, to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Walters, Item 6D.
Thank you. 6D would extend our social worker agreement with the Anacortes Family Center by another year. We entered into this agreement last year at the end of April. It was originally proposed as a three-year agreement. We approved a one-year agreement because we wanted to reevaluate it. It's now, I guess, been three, four months since, three months since the agreement expired. The proposal is to extend it for another year. I think that maybe that's worthwhile, but I think that we ought to reevaluate it, like we said we were going to. This hasn't come before the Council Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee, which would be a logical committee to review it in. And I think we ought to have that discussion because I think the family center is doing good work, but it seems to me that they're not having very much success, and I don't think that's their fault. But it might be that there might be a better use for $50,000 a year of general revenue. We don't have any special funds to pay this contract out of. So I would suggest that we postpone consideration of it, especially since it's already three months after expiration, until we can talk about it some more.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll bring it back for consideration in the future. All right, we're on to Item 7A. Ordinance 4023, Amendment to AMC Chapter 1830, Illicit Discharge and Connections to Stormwater Drainage Systems in AMC Chapter 1912, Definitions and Interpretations. Ms. Henneberg, it's already there. I didn't even have to read that out. You made it up in time. You're on. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I'm just here to give you a brief refresher on Ordinance 4023, and also for anyone watching who missed my presentation two weeks ago when we did the first read. Ordinance 4023 amends Chapter 1830 of our municipal code, which is regarding illicit discharges to the stormwater system. We're amending it to meet the requirements of our municipal stormwater permit. This ordinance will create the foundation for our source control program, which will work with businesses to implement practices that protect water quality. The deadline for code adoption is August 1st of 2022, and the program will launch in January of 2023. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them now.
I think we got, I know we got all the council inputs, but anything we may have missed? Oh, this is open for members of the public. Anybody want to comment on it? Okay, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Bolton.
I move to approve Ordinance 4023 as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Bolton, a second by Mr. Walters to approve Ordinance 4023 as presented. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Bolton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Item 7B, which is a contract modification. Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Project 20032. This is discussion with possible action. Mr. Holman, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council, and members of the public. I'm Tim Holman, Engineering Services Manager with the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department, and I'm here to present to you a contract modification for Dalton Olmstead and Flugelvand. And actually, I want to start by commending Councilmember Bolton on getting that right in her council report. And I'm going to refer to this company as DOF from here on out. So we're doing a contract mod to DOF's contract. DOF is the construction management consultant for the wastewater treatment plant outfall project. As I know, I've been before you before, we've mentioned, we've added scope to all the consultant team as we're moving into the construction phase for the marine portion of the outfall project. This is the last This is the last, last one of those. This is our construction manager. They also do environmental technical support for sediment testing before and after construction. So we're adding some scope and some budget to Task One, which was the design coordination. That will be for the additional design coordination for the upland portion, which if you recall, we rejected bids on. So we're going to look at some redesign on that. And then we're also scoping in Tasks Six, Seven, and Eight, which have always been expected. They're the construction management and construction phase for the marine portion. The modifications in the amount is $616,000. And it'll bring the new contract to $1,440,000 and some, 240,000. And we probably will, as expected, this is to scope in the construction management for the marine phase. We'll probably be bringing a mod as well in the future as we scope in the upland phase. And so I want you to be aware of that coming in the future. But we're doing this phased approach because these are large contracts. It's a very large project, and it's very common to add scope along the way in order to manage the budget. So staff recommends approval of this modification.
And again, just a reminder for anybody who might be watching. I know council's aware this is intentional, that these are big numbers, but it's intentional that we phase, phase in these scopes. Anyway, council, any questions for Mr. Holman? Mr. Young.
Thank you. No, I just really wanted to comment about the length of discussion we've had about this for quite a while and the thought in the review, not only of cost and just the reality of where we are and what we need, given where we are as a global economy. But, you know, I do think that the staff has done, put an excellent effort into justifying all costs associated with this. And we found ways that I think, if I'm correct, most of the cost is paid for. But yet, the question still was, is it an effective use of dollars? And the answer to that is yes. So, you know, short of any of the other council members having something they want to say, I will rec, a move that the City Council authorized the mayor to sign a modification to Contract 20-032 SEW 001 with Dalton, Olmstead, and Flugelvand Incorporated in the amount of $616,000, increasing the total contract price to $1,440,240.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubick to authorize the contract modification 20032 SEW 001 as presented. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Bolton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item 7C, which is Resolution 3039, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the City of Anacortes and the Commissioned Anacortes Police Services Guild. Ms. Shu, you are on.
Mayor, council members, the audience, thank you for amending tonight's agenda to include Resolution 3093. Wanted to give a little bit of background as it relates to the collective bargaining process. Labor law very much is tied to the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act that is followed, codified through RCW 4156. The basic realm of what needs to be covered through collective bargaining are wages, hours, and working conditions. And some examples of mandatory subjects of bargaining include base wages, hours of work, shift differentials, severance pay, work rules, sick leave, health insurance, overtime, uniforms, union security. The list, the list is long, and there's more in terms of what is covered under mandatory subjects of bargaining. I'm here tonight to give you just an update of where we stand with all of our collective bargaining agreements. We have a bargaining agreement that is in place through the end of 2022 with Teamsters Local 231. We will be going into negotiations with them this fall. The Anacortes Police Services Guild contract has two different arms to that, the commissioned and the non-commissioned. We have an agreement in place right now with the non-commissioned. Tonight, I'm presenting the commissioned contract to you. And we also have an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1537 that goes through 2025. So that kind of gives you just a status update of where we are with collective bargaining. So where City Council falls in the collective bargaining process is that you have the final role in approving agreements once they've been tentatively agreed to. So we have had a team that's been working with the Commissioned Police Services Guild to come to a negotiated agreement. So the collective bargaining agreement that we are presenting tonight is a three-year agreement that is effective July 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2024. This unit has 23 employees, and the budget impact, the cumulative budget impact over the three years equates to $993,619. It accounts for wage increases in 2022. A wage increase of 5% goes into effect. And then we have bifurcated wage increases in '23 and '24. So on January 1st of each of those years, there will be a 2% increase, followed by a 2% increase on July 1st. We've addressed some additional items as part of the collective bargaining process that updates the wage differential between the top step officer and first step sergeant. We've added the Juneteenth holiday, and that will go into effect in 2023. We have some changes in our longevity premium payment, changes in specialty pay and premiums, incentive premiums. We've increased our life insurance policy to $75,000. That is consistent with what we have with the firefighters as well. And we have removed a short-term disability policy now that the Washington Paid Family Leave Policy is in effect. In lieu of any retroactive payment, we are providing a $2,000 premium, or excuse me, $2,000 payment that creates a lot less work for our Finance Department in figuring out the retro pay, especially as it applies to any kind of overtime. Another way of looking at that, and it's coming up okay on the screen. It's not coming okay here, is just kind of breaking it down in terms of what the dollar impact of that agreement is. And this is the cumulative year-over-year cost. The city staff recommends that the City Council adopt a Resolution 3093 that would authorize the signature and execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Anacortes and the Anacortes Commissioned Police Services Guild. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate the bargaining teams in both the Guild and city staff. Counsel, any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Looking at the financial analysis, cover sheet here on this, I think this appears to be a fair agreement. We've got to compensate our employees fairly as a matter of fundamental fairness, but also because they have options. A lot of employees at the city may have the option to work from home from some other employer. Police can't really work from home, I guess, but they do have options for other police departments. We will lose people if we don't compensate them. It does seem fair to me from our perspective, especially given where inflation is and where employees' costs are. I assume the Police Guild also thinks it's a fair agreement since they ratified it. I can't speak to the appropriateness of any of the other 40 pages of the contract because we didn't have this document prior to tonight. I don't think there's any reason that we couldn't have had it emailed to us maybe a week ago. And I think that that should be our practice going forward. But I also understand we need to ratify it tonight because finance needs it, and we don't want to overburden them in doing these calculations. Let's just also burn into our memories that this represents a $700,000 annual increase in the cost of personnel in one part of one department. And the overall general fund budget is $15 million, broadly a third each from property sales and utility tax. Utility tax in some ways is declining. Sales tax is volatile, and property tax doesn't increase when your assessment goes up. So I think this is fair for our employees. We've got to have our police department. We've got to compensate our employees. But I don't know how we're going to pay for all of this going forward, and we need to get creative on that.
Anyone else, council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the resolution as presented. Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to approve Resolution 3039 as presented. Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Bolton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shu, and thank you all. Being no further business before the council, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.